He's gonna go down in somebody's book though for the number of times he's been running. He's got that record.
Yeah Jennifer, they just laid those.
Sorry, I'm just gonna try to slide through, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Good evening, hello. How are you lady? I'm good, how are you doing?
Hanging in there best we can.
Hi there.
What you up to?
An agenda, they're on the back table.
Okay, your back table.
Okay, then they're all, they're all um taken there, but I have everything posted online. The agenda and the agenda packets.
Yes sir.
Yeah, I got them available at any time, if you just wanna stop by. If you want to.
We have.
Or yeah, make sure this is done. You're just gonna make one Mr.
I've got. Which um Chief Katie Crappi. I highly recommend it. Um Chief Cowan. Okay. Bill Rollins, Rollins. From Washington. So they're not, they're not empty of things. Because we have.
I can't say all right.
We have. While we're supporting. To have them on panel. And from the council sits on. Uh Mr. But what they're going to do, they're going to.
Nothing because if you answer the first question wrong, you should turn over that thing and not turn it over. Even within the town limits, we don't want to.
I hate stuff like this, I've been trying to answer, I don't, it gives me a headache. Is this, is this the one from the committee's commission, the survey?
I don't know.
This is for the.
I have to do the whole thing.
Preferably.
Tonight?
No, no, not tonight.
Oh thank God. You're not gonna miss me Charles.
Yes please.
You can come see me in a.
No, I didn't know about it.
I'm right there at the airport. What, what are these cameras?
Yeah.
Do you think they're being camouflaged? Where are these cameras here? They're gonna livestream.
Thank you.
I'll go here. I guess it's gonna be uploaded to the. I'm not curious. I just.
Yes.
He's here. I don't know. We actually, we had a meeting yesterday with Ron Corrada. Does she come to build this? Of course it's totally different. It has been a week of. It is so. So. Yes. Whatever purpose people saw looking for. Cause I'm not sure. I think. The camera's cost. I, I'm not thinking so, I'm thinking it's, it's coming from my. The one that's doing the spring, uh barf lace. Pepper? No. Michael. What is Michael's name? Michael's last name? That's doing the.
Oh, Michael Whitman.
She was asking about.
Okay. Facebook. I logged into the town Facebook. Make sure I had all the. My work.
So. You mean you get my stuff out here. Oh. You can come visit. I should be. Staff. This is kind of. Into a designated. Do you live in the town limit, Mr. Charles?
Hey there, where did you sneak in?
I came first.
Oh, I've, I've been talking. Uh-uh, I came first.
Evening everyone, in the call this meeting to order at six o'clock PM on October tenth, twenty twenty-three. Just a few housekeeping items before we get further along in our agenda, we ask that all in attendance, please set your cellphones to silence or vibrate as well, that goes for us as well up here. It's a pleasure to see that we have a packed house tonight, welcome everyone and thank you all for being here, in the spirit of being more transparent and involving more of the community into our town meetings. As you see we have the cameras, we will be live tonight on Facebook Live, so hello to everybody on Facebook, yeah, everybody get to see y'all being mean to us up here. So um. So yeah. So um yeah, so we called a meeting to order and next we have our invocation. By.
Let us pray. Father in heaven, we come tonight to give thanks and praise to you, we thank you for this opportunity to gather tonight and we pray that progress will be made, we ask you to lead us and guide us that we do things pleasingly in your sight, asking your blessing upon our town, our council, and our citizens that continue to keep us and guide us, this is our prayer in Christ's name, amen.
We save this every meeting, I'm gonna carry y'all still for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up we have roll call by Mr. Jennifer Bracy.
Roy Sharp.
Yeah.
David Hunt.
Here.
Linda Blackburn.
Here.
Charles Freeman.
Yeah.
Charles Reynolds.
Yeah.
All are present and you have a forum.
Thank you Ms. Bracy. I'm now onto public comment. First up we have Mr. Thomas Mazel.
Good afternoon to the mayor, manager, and councilor, council.
Good afternoon.
Well, number one, we have, we wanna thank. And recognize our chief for his long and short stay here with us, he has been a well. Protecting police chief in the community. Um, next of all. We um. A concern about the ordinance that was passed last month, last, last month. About this drinking ordinance in search of a designated area. We have this gun violence study going on and we feel, a lot of people feel and I feel myself. That it's just gonna add to the violence by having people drinking in the streets. Uh and uh so we feel like that's, that was a bad move on the town council, mayor, and the manager, and, and everybody that's involved. We have a lot of people that were talking about getting a petition against these because we feel like it's the wrong thing to do at this point, we need to come back, back all this shooting person, so we feel like there's, it's gonna cause more shooting violence in the streets. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, and I do wanna address that, we don't have a drinking ordinance, we have a social district that was passed, and the social district is not to promote drinking, the social district is to promote live entertainment, so if you're, if you're drinking inside of your, inside of a venue and you wanna take your brew outside, you can do that in the social district. If you wanna, if you wanna have live music downtown, you wanna have festivals, you wanna have concerts, things of that nature, you can have your, if you go to different places in North Carolina, they have social districts, it brings businesses, it increases the population, and a lot of the crime here is being done by people that are not even legal, the legal age to drink. So I wanna clear that up, I let y'all know that we will not do anything or pass anything that would endanger anyone in this town, and crime, safety of our citizens is our number one concern, so I just wanted to throw that out there and address that. Um, next up for our public comment, we do have Ms. Ida Harris, um. It looks like we have two. Okay.
You can just put up the.
Come on Ms. Harris, you put up your phone.
And this will be quick. Oh I need to see, okay, the first thing is, um, the building beside me, the pavement is not level, if people fall down, I fall down myself. This lady, Alice Stacey, she walked on a canyon, she, she had to go to hospital and everything. Uh, they painted, they painted the sidewalk yellow, bright yellow, couple of years ago when she fell, uh let's go, it's, it's that, and it's still unlevel. Uh Sylvia, I, I wrote her name, I remember her last name, last month, cause this one just came in, she fell down, the police moved, was coming by, a lady police moved, coming by town, and she supposed to, she said she was gonna turn into the town, she was coming out into the town. That uh turning for me and stuff, so that's why I didn't call anybody out, and the. About that. Her falling down just last week, not last month. In the same, in front of the same building, right beside that, Gus One Stop Shop.
It's funny to do this.
Right beside my door, Gus One Stop Shop, right, sidewalk. It's uneven, they, they painted it yellow before, the yellow is gone, the bright yellow is gone, people still fall down, I got chess loft and neighbor that he fell down too, Sylvia, chess, Alice Stacey. She got papers from the doctor's up on where she fell, she went to the hospital.
And this is where?
Main Street, right beside my building, I'm one oh eight.
One oh eight.
It's Gus, Gus One Stop Shop.
Loser's loft for repairing. Mr. Mayor. Loser's loft for, for repairing or repairing those law. The sidewalk, and you said in front of your building?
It's right, it's right beside my building.
In Main Street.
Steven, have you done anything for that before?
Yeah, they painted it yellow.
Well, it needed something, it needed to happen besides painting.
It's gone.
This is the first, this is the first we've heard of this, so we will certainly be looking into this.
So she had reported.
I, I told the police lady. It's not made it to my office.
Yeah, but Steven's. We have these guys coming to town, we had doors to sidewalk, it came last week, we just gotta pull back on it, her piece of sidewalk was on that home, it's corrupt, so. We had to.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you Steven.
Thank you.
Uh, my building, um, I, I, I fixed my roof and everything to make sure I'm not falling, and stitch count, I had them, I paid somebody to put that gutter up so the water wouldn't be coming between the alleyway so much, cause it's thick, it's covered in my building. And the other lady has a hole in her building, and the water's coming in it, and it's rising, it's coming in my building, on the other side, I had some men to come and they put a partial roof or something to keep the water from coming, cause when it rained I had to scrub the floor, so they did something for me. To keep the water from coming in there, right now, I don't know how long it's gonna last, but I'm, I'm trying to do all I can, and I, I have, I, I'm paying a loan there for it, cause I got the facade great, I pay half of it, and I'm. I, I'm, I'm doing all I can, I'm trying to save you, that's all I can do. I need help, I can't take everybody for, you know.
Has anyone look, came out and looked at your building after the conversation we had?
They've been, and I'm, I'm, this has been.
Got you.
I need help. I got pictures y'all wanna see.
Well, I came in there Ms. Ida, I know how it is.
We spoke about it before too. Want to say something? So uh we went out, I've been out of the building before with her, and her business next one was on the river, and she's going to be all about her, and we need a problem too.
Yes, yes.
So that was where, to, to gathering the twenty-two buildings, and um it's a piece of cement I guess, blocking the alleyway, it was trapping the water, and she's sitting next to the buildings, I went, going back to the path behind her building, and we drove the path, cleaning her, the gutter off, trying to help her out, so she was thinking that if it wasn't for the path, the one that was, it's not the path, it's the two buildings that. Merch is only, it's causing problems, and I don't think it's a challenge, you should call, I've been out there with, this is out of self, a challenge for her building, I never been in this really building, but the manager, myself, and I'll be back with this bitch on again.
Would you be able to? Ms. Harris, yeah, so.
Yes, we're from number one, the doctor, and I can. Yes, I have it. I will, I will reach out to you so that we can schedule a meeting, okay, thank you.
Thank you Ms. Harris.
Thank you.
In our last public comment, we have this. Mr. Donald Kirkland.
Give you everybody, I think I was gonna make a, sorry. Um, first I uh, you know, say a prayer for Israel right there, being bombarded, if anybody's seen the news, a lot of murder, killing going on over there, um anybody that has, anybody has Jewish friends or whatnot, you know, kinda touching the home, we have someone on here. Um, the um, other issue I wanted to speak on was uh. Sunday we had the issue of Walmart with the young lady, I was there for the entire time, I directed traffic. The police department exercised extreme professionalism in dealing with that, it couldn't have had a better outcome than we were peaceful when it came out of that. Um, the way they handled it, the way everything was done, the evacuation restore and whatnot, they need to be committed to what they did. Um, they don't get a bunch of praise where they should, and I'm one of the first ones to critique them in a minute, I'm getting praised too, some, some up here know that, but they waited. But um, but they did a really good job, and, and they're doing throughout the town as well as best they can for what they got. So you know, I would like to, you know, ask y'all to give them a big round of applause on the thank thing for, for what they've done, especially that young lady, cause that was a very long, touching, you know, situation out there. Thank you.
Thanks for that, yeah, let's get.
Thank you Mr. Kirkland, that was a, that was a really good, good comment, um just building upon, upon that too, with that professionalism, um I want, do wanna say thank you to the police department for um putting that out on Facebook and letting everyone know and putting the facts out, cause I was getting calls about four different stories, so thank you for putting that out there and putting the community at ease and calming everyone's nerves, so thank you for your service and everything that you do for us. Alright, um, next up we have approval of agenda. Do we have any additions or revisions to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I have one, I wanted to have a discussion about the council committee for um. The charter, I would like to have a charter committee created so we can talk about, have a discussion about the two meetings a month, instead of one meeting a month.
So that'd be agenda item number eight for charter, town charter discussion. Are there any other additions to the agenda? There's no, no other changes to the agenda, do we have a motion to approve with the addition of agenda item number eight?
Motion to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion's made, proper second to approve the agenda with the addition of item number eight for town charter discussion, all in favor?
Uh, yes.
All opposed? Motion carried. Next memo to our consent agenda, Ms. Etheridge.
Yes, thank you mayor, council, citizens. Our consent agenda items this evening consist of the approval of minutes for the September twelfth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting, the approval of minutes for the September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three special meeting, I have budget ordinance number eight, which is referencing our national night out Walmart donation to amend the budget. Budget ordinance number nine, referencing the governor's crime commission grant funding, and I would also like to ask for approval for an honorary proclamation to name this week as fire prevention week for our fire department and all, all that they do. That concludes the consent agenda and I respectfully request approval if there are no questions.
Motion to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion's made, proper second to approve the consent agenda, all in favor?
Uh, yes.
All opposed? Motion carried, um first up on our agenda tonight, we have recognition of six new town employees, Ms. Etheridge.
Yes, and I'm very pleased to announce uh our new employees, if I could ask Steven and his staff to come up front, and I also have Doug Wilson. Doug White, I'm sorry, my apologies Doug.
That's my cousin that he got.
I, I know, I know. I just wrote that wrong.
On behalf of the public working department, uh we got some new team members here, Mr. Nathan Ward, Mr. Melvin Bone Jr., Mr. Jamal Wong, they all part of our water sewer division, Mr. Jamal, I mean Mr. Keepers Lee, he's in our street department, and um this youth right here doing us really well, motivating some of the old guys, we all love him, youth is like a beautiful thing, and it's Mr. Doug White right here, he's my tag team partner, he and I kinda grew up in y'all in the town a little bit, he left, but now he's back, and he's bringing a lot of energy too, even though he's not.
And thank you Mr. White.
Congratulations to all the new staff, and um, thank you, uh, thank you Steven for, for um all the personnel services and getting the staff, I'm very excited for our parks and rec as well, it's been, been a long time coming, so.
I appreciate that Mr. Mayor, I wanted to highlight Mr. Doug as a parks and rec director, we have went a long time without parks and rec, and then we finally have someone that I feel and have confidence in that's gonna do a good job, um so welcome to the team, and welcome all you guys to the team, definitely.
Alright, next on our agenda, we have um the vote on ordinance uh number ten, this is representative ordinance declaring a road closure for the twenty twenty-three downtown Ahoski event.
Yes, thank you mayor, as the council is aware, any state maintained street closing from the town events requires a formal ordinance be approved by town council, the town wishes to close the section of Main Street from Lloyd to McGlon Street on Saturday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, in order to host the Ahoski Fall Fling event. Staff respectfully requests approval of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four dash ten, declaring a road closure for twenty twenty-three downtown Ahoski event.
Motion to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Before I second, Mr. Reynolds, I'm gonna second, but I want everybody that's in here tonight, I want y'all to come outside to the Ahoski Fall Fling, okay, to come enjoy yourself, it's something for everybody on both ends of the street, it was something we haven't had in a while, and I would love to see all of y'all out there, so please come out, and I second that motion, Mr. Reynolds.
One more motion, I make a motion that Mr. Hart, it was our first thing. Is it a time?
No sir.
Well, our, our first motion has been the media proper second to approve the ordinance for road closure for uh twenty twenty-three downtown Ahoski event, all in favor?
Uh, yes.
All opposed? Motion carried, um before we go to item number three, that. Um, the sentiment, I know we have some volunteers that are here planning that event and have, um, working very hard to make that event successful, so um thank you to all the volunteers here that are planning, and it will be Saturday, and um we look forward to seeing everyone out there with us. Uh for item number three, we have the discussion and approval of FEMA's assistance for firefighter grant.
Yes, thank you again. Attached in your packets, you will find the documentation for the FEMA assistance for firefighter grant, or also known as AFG, in April, the town was noticed that we had received a grant of one million dollars for the purchase of a fire truck to be built per specifications. We requested more than the one million dollars for this purchase, but were only awarded the one million due to our population size. This request asks only for the approval of the one million dollars in FEMA AFG grant funding, so that we do not lose the allocation. Staff respectfully requests acceptance of FEMA's assistance to firefighter grant award of one million dollars for the purpose to be used towards the purchase of a new fire truck as intended per the grant.
Ms. Etheridge, what is the total cost of that vehicle?
At the present time, it's approximately one point eight million.
I'm, I'm gonna ask that we table this, I know it may be a time sensitive situation, but I'm asking that we table this until we can have a continued meeting or a workshop, um, because this is kind of a two-parter here, we haven't gotten to the second part that we have to do. So I don't feel comfortable with doing this part at this time, so it's up to council, but I'm just gonna ask that we have a continued meeting or a workshop to discuss this into detail, so we can have all the facts. So that's my recommendation.
This is just the approval of the grant, so this is not committing us to any additional funds, just as, as additional clarification also.
I think what Mr. Hart is trying to say, you really want to get this, how far are we gonna get this other money from, that's what I think he's going on in.
That was the discussion in the next item, and I think I had sent documentation just to discuss that most of our small communities are utilizing funding from the LGC.
Ye- yes ma'am.
For that, because it's, it's um too costly to take those monies from our fund balance.
I told, I told.
Something, Mr. Mayor, uh, I want to make sure that everyone here understands what we're speaking of, we're not talking about applying for a million dollars, we're talking about sending in a recommendation saying that we would like to have our one million dollars if it becomes available to us, we're not having to pay anything back, it doesn't cost us anything to ask for it at this point in time. We're not having to pay anything back. It didn't cost us anything to ask for it at this point in time. So, I think we'd be all right, asked in permission. And, uh, then we can study the rest of it a little later on, but let's don't let a date go by and we miss that and get into one million dollars.
Okay, all right, well, I was trying not to do this. But you say we, we was notified in April that we received this award letter. Our award letter shows a date effect of January twenty-three of twenty twenty-three. This one million dollars in this award letter says we're gonna have to put fifty thousand to that. So, if we accept this award, I'm just making sure and making clear that we're not gonna be putting fifty thousand dollars to accept this award at this time.
That is correct. And there, this, and Mike, if you would like to speak to the timeframes, this, this award took quite an extensive amount of time.
Uh, yes, ma'am.
It did.
It's, it's gonna be a, a long process. Right now, with the grant that we have awarded, um, with the truck that we're looking to purchase, about a thirty-month build time. Um, and there is time difference with the grant expiring, a much shorter amount of time. So, and if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer, but it's, it's kind of a long detailed process from start to finish.
So, so. Is the grant expiring?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Uh, right now, the grant is stated to expire January twenty-five, which I reached out to FEMA. We can get a one-year extension on that grant, so January twenty-sixth.
So, what's the time restraint on us to actually approve and accept this grant tonight?
I would like to say, Doug, within the extra days if possible, um, then we can move forward. Um, the truck is already one of the long processes, is actually making specifications for the truck. Thankfully, we've already got that done. Once we sign the contract, which should take about thirty, sixty days, then that's when the thirty months start.
And also with inflationary pressures, we don't want to have this continue where we have looked in every area possible. We have worked with USDA, Mr. Reginald Spade, their director. We have worked tirelessly to try, try to find matching funding for the overrun in the cost versus what we were allowed based on our population size. Unfortunately, at, at the end of the day, Mike has tirelessly looked for reallocation of USDA funding. I've looked in every other source and there just is not a market governmentally for equipment funding. It is just not there. So, that is why we took, you know, the time to try to research every avenue that we could before bringing this to you.
Okay, you said thirty more days, correct, Chief?
Yes, sir, they, they would put us, you know, should put us with deadlines as long as we don't, you know, just.
I applaud you for going after this. I think it was great. I, I do commend you for doing that. Um, I'm not trying to slow your process down. I know you've been working hard on it. Um, but as far as my decision, I can't speak for no one else, I don't feel comfortable approving it tonight. So, that's entirely up to you guys. Um, I just don't feel comfortable approving it. I think we need to have a discussion further about it in detail.
And the thirty days will not hinder you from doing what you're trying to do?
No, sir, as long as we continue to move forward. Um, because so far as you know, everything on our.
Anything else to discuss?
The price of the data becomes there.
I will.
One, one down call possibly in this month, they could have a price increase if the contract is not signed. Um, I am going to reach out tomorrow to see if actually you have to sign the contract if you'd like to provide, you know, to lock in that price for the manufacturer has a price increase, which the beginning of there year runs October, no, of October, I guess, Mike, where I would do that. And typically, that's when they see the price increases is in there.
What does this truck have that trucks we have now don't have?
Sir, I'm sorry.
What are the benefits of the truck you're talking about buying? What are they over the ones that we do have?
The truck you're actually looking at replacing right now is a nineteen eighty-seven platform truck, which we currently have. Um, when we did the specifications on the new truck, um, possibly, we just told them we wanted a plane truck, which what we got in other places is what I call a parade truck. It's a fire truck. And all we did was only want new. You know, it's something that was, because our truck man is currently about thirty-six years old. And by the time that the grant goes through, by the time we'd actually get our truck and put it in service, the current truck for our company would be forty years old.
Is it paid for?
Yes, sir, the truck we have now, yes, sir.
And I would also mention on the heels of what Mike is discussing, the second agenda item, which I know we can entertain at another time, but I would like to bring up the importance of the LGC only meets monthly. So, if we do choose to utilize the LGC to make up that funding variance, we may be out later beyond when his timeframe it really ends for that pricing requirement. So, that's why we wanted to try to bring this all at one time.
Is, is there a reason that this hasn't came before since April until now?
Yes, it is. The reason is because we have been trying tirelessly to find additional funding options. The LGC was my very last option. I did not want to have to ask the state for the funding, but our fund balance cannot hold it.
Would it, would it be, I mean, I, I think, um, you know, since we, we'll be going to the LGC and this will be, you know, um, that it will be current.
Yes.
Um, would it be, would everyone be comfortable if we did a special meeting?
Sure.
I mean, we can do that before, before the month is out and, you know, just so we can talk it a little bit and everyone can be comfortable with our decision.
That's fine.
I'll make a motion to that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
All right, so we have a motion that's been made in property sector to, uh, table this discussion for a special meeting.
You can schedule that meeting tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I say we go ahead and schedule that. Yes, um, all in favor?
Uh, aye.
All opposed?
No. I said no.
Motion carried.
How much time has to be allotted for the special meeting to be called?
Forty-eight hours. So, if you schedule it for, like, Monday morning. I mean, Friday morning.
Tell him I did Friday?
Yes, sir.
We can't do that. We're not coming.
I can't be here this Friday.
I won't be here.
Can we do Monday, the sixteenth?
I have a meeting at nine on the sixteenth.
I have one Thursday.
Well, before we move from Friday, we only had two that said they couldn't be here Friday. How many of us can be here Friday? You can be here, Mr. Shaw. Mr. Mayor, can you be here as well? Anytime that's pretty feasible for you.
How about tomorrow?
We have to have at least forty-eight hours to, to run the notice.
I'm available anytime, Mr. Mayor.
Friday, we have Monday.
I have to do Friday morning. We've got three points.
Yeah, Friday nine.
Friday nine.
It's Friday.
Mr. Reynolds, can you be here Friday at nine?
It's Friday.
Yes, sir.
I'll see if I can roll over that air.
The mayor's gonna bring you a biscuit.
Appreciate it. Make it, chief.
Friday night.
Yes.
So, so would that be a table? Item number four, along with as well?
Three and four.
So, we move to, uh, number. We'll move to agenda item number five, which would be to vote on resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four dash six, which is the resolution of retirement for Police Chief Jimmy Asbell. I'm not gonna say that, but.
I know, I know. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we're not gonna read this in its entirety tonight, but we did want the council to please vote on resolution twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four dash six, the resolution of retirement for Police Chief Jimmy, Jimmy Asbell. It will be presented at a later date upon his retirement.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion is made, property, uh, motion is made, uh, second, to approve the resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four dash six for retirement of Police Chief Jimmy Asbell. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Next up, we have the vote on amendment to personnel policy. This is for employee benefits, section thirteen, employee recognition at retirement.
Yes, thank you. You will find a revised section of the Town of Ahoski Employee Manual in your council packets this evening. This section amends our current policy to include the attached Article Six, Employee Benefits Section Thirteen, Employee Recognition at Retirement. If approved, this amend, this amendment will be included in our current personnel policy, which will be the most current version of our controlling personnel policy document. Staff respectfully requests approval of amendment added October tenth, twenty twenty-three to Article Six, Employee Benefits Section Thirteen, Employee Recognition at Retirement.
I make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion is made, property second, to approve the amendment to the personnel policy, Article Six, Employee Benefits Section Thirteen, for employee recognition at retirement. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Next up, we have approval of, uh, vacancy to the historic commission. Ms. Branson?
In front of you in your packets today, we have a request by Jeanetta Chavis to fill one of the two remaining vacancies on the historic commission. Um, this vacancy would, um, or the vacancies on this historic commission have been there for several years, so I believe that her addition to the historic commission would help again fulfill so that we have a full board as well for the allowance of a quorum the next time a meeting needs to be called.
I think everybody in here is, uh, you heard our application. Do you have the motion to approve?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Right, motion is made, property second, to approve Ms. Chavis', um, uh, appointment to the historic commission. All in favor?
Uh, aye.
All opposed?
And I believe she's here, she would stand where everyone could see who she is.
Congratulations, Ms. Chavis. Thank you for joining the board. And, um, the, uh, last agenda item we have is for item number eight, which is the town charter discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We've had, uh, several discussions about creating a charter committee to look at the charter, to update it, um, and to talk about having more than one meeting a month. Um, so I'm open for discussion.
Um, I just had a question. So, the, so the discussion would be to, to form a committee? And that committee will work on, um, doing the, the separate revision thing?
Yes.
Okay. And is this, this committee, um, any suggestions of specific personnel?
I don't know if, uh, attorney would like to be on the committee, but we're definitely gonna need her guidance dealing with the legal document or such. Um, so I highly recommend that the committee definitely gives it to her before we bring it to council.
I'm happy to serve or just attend the meetings with the committee, um, and offer my perspective.
So, my first recommendation is Mayor White?
I've been thinking about being. Yeah, I'll be happy to, to serve.
Question. Why do we need a committee to decide whether we, why do we, once a month or twice a month?
I think what Councilman Hunt would like to form this committee to do is to basically learn the logistics of what it would take to potentially amend the charter. Um, and that will take some research and we don't wanna subject the entire board to my initial legal research in order to figure out what has to happen to, to potentially change it. And then that committee would take what I give them as far as legal information, to discuss and bring their suggestions to the full board. That's, that is my interpretation.
Yes, ma'am. I, I just feel that sometimes we have enough business to have two meetings a month. And to move the town forward, I think having two meetings a month would show our citizens that we're actually working. Um, one meeting a month is fine, but some months, we do have the called special meetings. So, if we already have these two meetings a month planned for the calendar year, we don't have to call as many special meetings.
That would be good.
And, um.
That would be good.
What other, um, just so, you know, for just general knowledge, what other municipalities and counties have to?
Well, I know our county manager interim is here tonight. Could you please stand, sir? Um, I don't know if everyone knows him. I don't even know your name, but I know you're county manager. All right, Mr. Patterson, I do know the Hurford County Board of Commissioners meet twice a month. I know the Town of Muffusboro meets twice a month. Um, so it seems to be a trend of municipalities and counties doing it. And, uh, I just like with the social district, I wanna kind of bring us up to speed with everybody else and kind of see if we can have two meetings a month.
Would that include discussion too, perhaps day and night? I think that's what the county does.
Yes.
So that you do get people who can't get here at night.
Yes, ma'am.
We, we used to have day meetings here in town, um, and we found that we get a lot more participation by having them at night.
Right, right, right.
So, what you need now? You need a pound to the, right now, that what you say?
Yes, sir.
I'm making motion that you and Shaw do that committee.
Uh, I own too many committees now, Mr. Thank you for that recommendation, but I, the last thing I need right now is another committee. So, I'd be glad.
So, it sounds like you're, uh, nominating.
I, I shoot it back at Mr. Reynolds.
I do.
Thank you.
Any other suggestions?
I have none, no, sir. Just need a motion. Oh, what, I see who you're looking at. I think so too, yeah.
I guess we can get together in the first, first minute.
Mm-hmm.
I think you need a motion.
I, I would, yes, yes, ma'am.
What you need, a motion now?
Motion to approve the.
Motion to approve.
We have a second.
Second.
Motion has been made in property second. Okay, um, to approve the committee for town charter discussion and planning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. I thank you for that agenda item, Councilman Hunt. Um, next up, we have our staff reports.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to remind everybody, this is National Fire Prevention Week. Fire safety start on home, everybody. The nobody who calls a fire in a home is actually by cooking, unattended cooking. So, let's just keep that in mind. Uh, this week, me and my staff, we are at, at their field.
That's right, that's right.
We, we're training pre-K through third grade, um, teaching different fire. We, we're training pre-K through third grade, um, teaching different fire safety tips to the age of perjury, um, learning their address, hide it down. There's about a thirty-minute, um, program we go through with, with each class, which is thirty-six classes. But it's enjoyable. Um, the kids love it. They love to dig red truck, we can truck, we let them do it too. Um, but other than that, everything is kind of moving pretty well.
And, and that camper that sits out here, that is what you train these kids and?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, yes, sir.
And we actually received that on a grant.
That's awesome, that's awesome. I saw it parked out there at the school.
Yes, sir. Um, we actually go to a high school preschool school with Wiel. Um, we do, do some type of thing stuff at a high school elementary school, but we don't do the camper because everybody at a high school elementary has already done that before years. So we're kind of stepping up, you know, age of perjury to, to the class, I think, or high school. But everything's doing well.
Just wanted you to know, if you go to Bearfield, it's a little boy that's going to ask you a million questions.
Might, might be two little boys.
Give him a little patience, he belongs to me, okay?
Thank y'all.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. How are y'all doing?
Good evening.
It's good to be here. Just to give you a little update on the police department, um, you'll see in the packets where you got your, um, report from the police department. Um, we're still, our call volume is still, um, below normal from what it had been previous month. So, um, I continue to commend the officers and the staff for all of what they're doing. Um, we still have, as mentioned earlier in the meeting, concerns about the, the crime, about crime assessment. Still addressing that as, as we have per previous meetings and things we've discussed with us guys. We are still actively, um, working with gun control. Um, we are already just a little over fifty gun seized this year. Um, if y'all recall, probably five, six months ago, we talked about that, so I told you last year, we had seized about fifty-five or fifty-six of the whole total here. We're already knocking on the door of passing. Uh, the officers are actively engaging people in the community, being very proactive to get the guns off the street and having encounters with these individuals. So, um, that, that just goes to having a well-trained staff like we have the police department and their ability to get out, utilize the law to their benefit to get these guns and stuff off the street. As far as, um, accidents, um, that's usually a topic of discussion that I get from quite a bit of citizens throughout the community. Accidents for the last several months have been down as well. We're below ten. I think we're like seven or eight for the last month, and normally we had been running, um, in the upper teens, upper low twenties. Um, we've been, a lot of the new officers that we've hired over the last two years, we've gotten through radar schools. They're out enforcing traffic as well, in addition to the other things, slowing people down. Um, and a lot of those have contributed to traffic enforcement as well, so combined, both violent crime and traffic accidents altogether. Sometimes they're going to hand you money. So that, that has been beneficial to you. Um, just a little bit of update on behind the hospital, um, public works have gotten all the lines and stuff up back there from the previous meetings where, you know, approved those changes back there. I've talked with several of the residents, there's one or two says they still see some issues, but then there are others that saying they're seeing improvement. So I think that's going to continue to be a work in progress. Some of the four-way stops at some of those locations, people are not used to seeing them. So it's like, if you travel that road on a daily basis, it's going to take some time to acclimate yourself to a new traffic habit. So officers have not been really heavily enforcing more than just reinforcing the deeply designed existing type of new traffic habit and trying to enforce it that way before we just erect a new sign and then the very first person by the right still get it protected. Trying to remind everybody, space and education more so than always.
Did you ask, did you put the, um, speed limit over on Pembroke? Um, there's a speed limit sign on Pembroke now, um, the digital one that picks up how fast you're going?
We did.
Did you put that there because of the four-way stops?
We put it there to help with the speeding complaints that we were getting on Pembroke prior to the new four-way stops.
But it's really helpful, and I've, I've had comments made that it's helpful because the, the new four-way stop is difficult to remember, and you don't expect it.
Correct.
Um, but when you, all of a sudden, you're seeing that digital speed limit sign, you, then you're sort of more aware of your surroundings. I, I don't know what it, I mean, I don't know.
Good feedback on several of the residents there that, um, were, were concerned about the speeding in that area.
Oh, yeah.
We strategically placed that in relation to where there's four-way stops where it.
It really helps, yeah. You might take that into note, that's a good way to get people sort of acclimated, I think, to a four-way sign, speed limit signs. But it's, the speed limit has stopped on Pembroke, the speeding?
Yes.
It's hard to speed now.
Yes, ma'am, and that, that was some of the, uh, positive feedback that we're getting. Let's start council's approval to make those traffic. We thank you for that. Other than that, everything else is running pretty through the police department. We're just handling our day-to-day operations, continuing to be proactive in the community, continuing to do, um, community involvement, where the officers are still out, out of their vehicles, walking in their vehicles, trying to be visible and speak to people so that they can continue to promote that, that community policing. And then other than that, um, tonight's a very bittersweet moment for me, as everybody knows. Next Friday is my last day, and I will retire. I have spent my whole adult career doing this. Thus that, thus in the community, I have had so many phone calls over the last thirty days, asking me to resign. I've gotten right here tonight. I have, I have worked really hard in my career to be sure that any involvement that I had with the citizens that was always a positive matter. I have tried to instill that in every one of my officers that I trained along the way. It's very important to me that community policing is where the rubber must be rubbed in my respect. For law enforcement, we have to be there in front of us to do all the hard work that nobody else wants to do. And we take, take sometimes a lot of criticism from whether we're doing right or doing wrong. But we have a well-trained staff, and I am so proud of each and every member of that house of police department. I have worked over the years when I was a major, I was in charge of retiring, I was in charge of training as well as after being promoted to the chief. And we have built a career ladder in place in that police department to be sure of that. We set career plans in place for every single employee whether they were new employees, brand new out of school, all the way to veteran staff. And we worked on trying to educate everybody so that there would always be a place for them in a hospital. It's hard to draw law enforcement to a hospital, it's hard to find outside resources to come to a hospital to want to be officers here. And my mindset's always been, train everybody so they can leave, but treat everybody as they want to stay. And I have focused so hard on our career to promote that with, with our staff so that when opportunities come available for these individuals, that their hard work will be recognized and that there's always room for advancement within the department, and the department always has somebody that's ready to step forward and step into these positions. And I think when those opportunities come to pass, these officers that work hard throughout their careers, when they see a light and an opportunity to, for those advancements, they understand that all their training and everything they put in place was, was, was worth all the effort that they had to do. The job is tough in and of itself to continue to do the training on top of it. It's, it's, they're all the officers to be commended for it. I want to thank all of the council members that have been super supportive with me throughout my whole career. I've worked with quite a few of you for many, many years. Y'all have been super supportive with me since I've become the chief of police, and I feel I have asked all the other council to work with. I genuinely appreciate each and every one of you. I'm going to miss all of you. I want to publicly thank Lee as my boss. I can speak, uh, on the fact that I've worked with several other previous town administrators and not taken anything away from any of them, but I can tell you that Lee has been a beacon of light for me and for many of the other department heads, because we've had conversations. She is, uh, very inspirational in her approach towards governing. Very, very positive in her conversations, team building skills that she has with all the department heads. She's like a pressure, pressure. We have our department head meetings weekly, she stays very informed. And she's just an inspiration to work for the world. I want to say thank you so much, Puff, for all that you've done for me, and our short term. Short time agreement working together, and all the girls in the town hall, Mayor, and everybody. I can't say enough about the positive relationships and the team building that has been put in place throughout the years here, especially since Lee's been here. There is a tremendous improvement, and I, I just can't say thank you enough for all that you've given us. And I'm going to miss working with you and everybody out here. I'll, I'll end with this, I didn't plan to speak this long, but to the citizens. I want to say thank you to everyone y'all. There's a lot of things I've been here that I do for many years. Y'all always been very supportive of me, always been encouraging, y'all kept me in prayer, kept me in the, I can only say thank you. And I appreciate it all.
Thank you, Chief, um, for those kind of words. I just want, um, sorry, before, before you go, Steve, I just wanted to say, there's any job in Ahoski that I don't want to have, it's that one right there, I'm telling you. So, um, yeah, the, the floor you got tonight is, is not enough. I know we're gonna, we're gonna officially, um, celebrate you, but I definitely want to say it's been a pleasure working with you. I think I speak for, for everyone when I say that. When, when we started the search, we all put in, you know, different things that we wanted in our chief. And I remember what I put in, in, in my little wish list, and you exemplified everything that I wanted. And, uh, you, you, your leadership in the times that we in has been, uh, has been very efficient and, um, should be commended, so I just want to thank you for everything that you do because you have a, a tireless job. And, uh, it goes without saying, thank you so much for all that you do for us.
I'm talking behind that. My public works department, like, like the chief said, they, um, took care of signs back down there area. And we've basically been working to get prepared for our fall, um, downtown, probably watch suicides. Um, it's Blackberry, your clock is not working again, but we're working on getting it back straight. And Mr. Freeman, the man's coming on October the sixteenth to take care of the problem. Thank you, y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Lassa.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Inspection wise, there's really not a whole lot to add. I'm going to get it out of the way right now, I don't know. October thirty-first, that is the projected opening day for Bojangles. That came from the number two guy. So everybody got questions, Kevin, so I want to go ahead and get that out.
Did, did the public hear that? I want to make sure everybody heard that. The open date for Bojangles?
Opening date for Bojangles. Their final inspection is actually scheduled next week, and I'm not expecting any problems. I've been doing their due diligence, keeping everything up to go and beyond. So that's looking good. I'm seeing problems there. Had kind of a slow September as far as permits. It's picked back up in one day. So, uh, a couple of other small items that are going on. We're getting the Wells Fargo ATU install permits finished. That, that will go into Murphy Station over in the by wall. And, uh, another somewhat large project will be the remodeling of Speedway on Memorial Drive with a name change to Seven Eleven, a date that's. Other than that, it's pretty much all the projects that are going on. Uh, I'm continuing to work with the town manager and, uh, town attorney, you know, the condemnation and things of that nature. Code enforcement steps. Other than that, doing our due diligence and trying to make sure we get everything done right the way it ought to be done. That's all I have for time.
Um, I don't really have too much to add. The resulting of one-on-one North Mitchell Street was approved, so we should have a fish market opening soon at that location. I know they've painted it and done it up real pretty. Um, we have a few other new businesses open up and some talks about some really interesting ones that hopefully I can talk about later. But we have some code enforcement wise, we've been sending out a lot more junk letters than grass letters recently. There's been a lot more complaints about that. For the junk, it's kind of different than the grass. We don't go in and take it, they just get it. So it's a little bit harder to enforce because we can't go in and take their stuff away. We can only find them for what's in order. But other than that, there's really nothing new unless anybody has any questions. Thank you.
Do you have an opening date for the fish market?
No, they have scheduled their fire inspection. It was actually today.
Okay.
So should be really soon. Remind them to do their business. No, they have it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Connie.
Good evening.
I don't have a whole lot. Everything's going well. All samples and compliance this month, passed law. On new permit, actually to protect the person this month, October third. And the only new issue we had was we had four calls, I think it was on glitch in the power system. Thank goodness it's a radiator and just the right. And that's all I have. Thank you.
I'm not going to listen, I really am. Um, financial wise, we are doing great. Um, we just go through our first quarter for the year. Uh, we are at twenty-five percent expenditure wise, so we are on point where we need to be. Um, as far as revenue, still waiting on taxes to come through again. We'll start seeing that increase in the next upcoming months. Um, auditors were on site, uh, September nineteenth, twentieth, and twenty-first. I had three different ones, um, which we all worked really well together. Um, they will not be on site, um, from here on out, uh, everything will be done off-site and through email and your organizer. But all is looking good. Um, they are talking possibly preseasonly, taking the eventual statements, um, either December or January. So we should be, um, good this year. Okay? Thank you.
We'll ask Mr. White to join us once he gets settled in with the Parks and Recreation, not Mr. White.
All right, um, so thank you to all the staff for the, uh, department reports. Next, we'll have comments from the council.
I just want to thank everybody for coming tonight and our department, Chief. I really appreciate, uh, in many ways that you have talked with me and helped us in a lot of things. And I just want to commend you for what you've done.
I'd like to make a comment. Um, it's very difficult to sit here and listen to Jimmy talk about leaving. I think that's difficult for all of us. I've had the honor of working with Jimmy since I came to the town in one capacity or the other, and you're right, no one wants his job. But he does a fine job of it. And thank you, Jimmy. Thank you for everything you've done and for what you've done for the department.
And thank you, Jimmy, thank you for everything you've done and for what you've done for the department.
Any other comment? All right, I want to just thank everyone for, for being here tonight again. Thank you to the production crew in the back for having us live and for the cameras and having us to be more transparent. Yeah, I see everyone Saturday. And at this, this time, we're asking for a motion to go into closed session for Personnel Matters.
So move.
Second.
Motion has been made in property second to go into closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.